Let's go ahead and call an IJ ping order. Let's have the roll call.
Kessler?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Rorden?
Here.
Ewart?
Here.
Benner?
Here.
Barton?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Education night will be given by Constance Black from the Hayesville Christian Church.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here today. I was actually a fill-in. I got a call just earlier today. And so a fellow pastor from the Hayesville Ministry Association asked me to come. So let's pray together. God, we thank you for your love and for your grace through Jesus Christ. Lord, we pray for your discernment and wisdom for the council, for the governing bodies of Hayesville. Lord, we also ask for your protection and that your spirit may be present within our citizens and our community. Lord, we thank you for your grace and love that fills our community. May we continue to honor you with our words, our actions, and our thoughts as we, as a people, together, live in community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Congratulations.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start tonight's meeting with a special order business. A proclamation of Police Week. It's where the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Police Officer Memorial Day in the week of, in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. Whereas a member of the law enforcement agency of Hayesville played an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Hayesville, whereas a man or an available police department provide a vital service. I'd like to observe May 9 through May 15, 21 as Police Week and May 15 as Police Officer Memorial Day. Mr. Barton?
Make a motion to pass the ordinance on the police officers memorial.
Second. Post second to approve the Police Officer Proclamation of 2021. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Second is a proclamation of the Public Works Week. Both happened to be signed at the same time. So the National Public Works Week proclamation is May 16 through 23rd. All strongly together, it's Public Works Professionals focused on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustain and resident community and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Hayesville. So we wanted to declare May 16 through 21 as Public Works Week. Mr. Benner?
I make the motion that we approve the proclamation for Public Works Week.
Second.
Post second to approve the proclamation of Public Works Week. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And I am seeing as a proclamation honoring Dr. John Burke, who is the retiring superintendent of the Hayesville Schools. Dr. Burke's 36 years as a superintendent in the state of Kansas, the last 18 as superintendent of Hayesville. During his time, we've had three schools been named National Brave Blue Ribbon. Campus High has become the International Backwater Program. It created a student-run coffee shop, student-run charter branch pack, two-run T-shirts, and all the 11 UST schools are named Capturing Kids' Hearts National Showcase Schools, two years in a row. So we'd like to do a proclamation honoring Dr. Burke for his retirement. That would be the one we have. Ms. Crum?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation honoring Dr. John Burke on his retirement as superintendent from UST 261.
Second.
Post second to approve the proclamation honoring Dr. John Burke. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Crum?
Yeah, and the proclamation also talks about the Capturing Kids' Hearts. You talked about, we were actually a Capturing Kids' Heart district, which all the schools in the district was, and that was the first time that had ever happened. And actually, last week, we just found out we were Capturing Kids' Hearts district again. So that's three out of the past four years. No other district in the nation's even close to that. But I did also want to mention that Dr. Burke is, they're having a going-away reception, retirement reception for him. The community can come out on May 21st from 3:30 to 6 o'clock, and that is at the Hayesville High School, the west side of town over there by the Hayesville High School and Tri-Cities together, and it'll be in the Hayesville High School half, which is on the east side. But again, that's the 21st from 3:30 to 6, if you'd like to go out and wish Dr. Burke well.
Very good. Move on to presentation approved minutes, a minutes of April 26, 2021. Ms. Barton?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of April 26.
Second.
Post second to approve April 26, 2021 minutes. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
I'm staying.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item one, the assistance has been heard, no one has signed up. Item two, approval of a license to bond. We have a six-year solid license renewal for Best Value Services LLC, 1939 Emmett Avenue. Ms. Barton?
Make a motion, we approve the license for Best Value Services. Second.
Post second to approve the renewal license for Best Value Services. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item three, adoption of ordinance resolutions. We have nothing. Item four, no communications. Ms. Crum?
I got a few to go over here. Let's go over the library first. First off, the library hours have changed a little bit. Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00, and Saturday's 10:00 to 4:00 now. Still closed Sunday. I also wanted to point out that there is a library board opening to be on the library board. If you're interested, you just have to be a citizen, be a resident of the city of Hayesville and be willing to attend a monthly meeting of the board. If you have any questions about that, you can call the library at 524-5242, or you can email ken@hayesvillecommunitylibrary.org. Their May calendar is out, and they actually have things on it now. They're pretty excited about. Today's summer signing, summer reading signups began. On the 17th, they will begin their Monday night movies. Zootopia is, you do need to call the library because they have a limit on how many people can come in for those movies, but you can call ahead and see if you can get in to see that. And then on the 24th, they'll have another movie night, and that one's The Princess and the Frog. And a reminder that they will be closed on Memorial Day. And I also wanted to give a congratulations. I don't think this has ever happened. The campus boys tennis team won regionals this past weekend. It'll be going to state as a team, so that's pretty cool. And I want everybody to know that the summer lunch program or meal program will be going on again here in Hayesville. You can get breakfast and lunches for free for any child ages 1 to 18. Those will begin on June 1st, and they'll run through July 29th. You can get those at three schools in Hayesville, you can get Campus High School, Nelson Elementary, and Hayesville Middle School. On Monday through Thursday, there are no meals on Fridays, and there's also none served on July 5th. Breakfast at all those sites are from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., and lunch at all those sites are from 11:00 to 1:00. You will be able to pick up on Thursday, if you go in there from 11:00 to 1:00 to those locations, you can pick up a three-day meal pack to cover Friday, Saturday, and Sunday when you're there getting the meals. And those packs will be given out Thursdays from 11:00 to 1:00 during lunch. I'm sure you'll see more advertisements for that coming out, but there will be breakfast and lunch for all the kids 1 to 18 again this year at the schools.
I have a question on that.
What?
Is, are those dine-in Monday through Thursday, or are they pickup?
I believe they are dine-in, but I will double check.
Okay, just so people know.
Announcements, or council before I do? Senior Center in Hayesville Hustle? Okay, seeing none. Senior Center Tuesday, May 11th, 11:30 virtual meeting of computer class tomorrow. Wednesday, May 12th, 8:30 Donuts and Coffee. Friday, May 14th, 10:00 a.m. Drumming Seniors. Monday, May 17th, 10:00 at Cherry Yoga. And Wednesday, May 19th, 1:00 p.m. I'll do commodities. The Hayesville Hustle has had 60 rides over the last two weeks, and one new rider registration the last two weeks. Which means there's been 127 rides for April, and March was 81, and then six new riders in April. So it continues to build, as we wanted to be able to have people using that bus service in town. With that, also, I'd like you to mark your calendars for 6 o'clock. The next meeting, so we have a workshop. I need to discuss insurance products, and I need to discuss potential traffic calling type situation that we were all sending emails about. Plus, there's probably some other things, but we'll put that all together. So I want you to mark the 6 o'clock, so we'll have an hour before next council meeting to discuss all those things. With that, we also, I don't know if the council knew, we have a new planning person. So we have Jonathan Tardik with us tonight. Jonathan, you'd like to stand up, or you have to say a few words to the council?
Hello, it's Jonathan Tardik, and I just moved from Michigan to come here as an urban planning administrator. I'm just glad to be here in warmer weather and just to see what all I can do to help out here and just have fun with my family and seeing everybody out and about town.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
We also have a new economic development director. We have Chad Baer, who is our new economic development director. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Yes, I'm Chad Baer, and I've worked in Kansas before, and I'm glad to be back in the area. Very excited about that. I attended the WABA, the Wichita Area Builders Association meeting this morning. It's a very interesting meeting there. Congressman Ron Estes was there. They talked about higher lumber prices and some national energy policy ideas, and then the current shortage of semiconductors and how that could play out for the rest of the year. So that was a very interesting meeting. So, but I'm very excited to be here and looking forward to meeting all of you and working with you, and hopefully we can get more businesses and get a nice balance and continue to make Hayesville a very desirable place to live and work.
Great, thanks, Chad. Welcome. With that, we'll move to item B, which is Sedgwick County Parkers Stations Report, monthly report. And I see a memo of new businesses of the Kansas Safety Training, Senegal Roofing and Exteriors, and Luxury Lawn and Landscaping. Item five, old business? Nothing. Item six, not a business. A consideration of RMS agreement with Sedgwick County. This agreement that we have to do every year. I don't think there's any changes. Is there any one? No, not. Chief will tell you.
Okay, what we're looking at, what you have before you tonight, is an agreement with Sedgwick County. What we're looking at is changing our record system that we're currently on over to a newer system. Sedgwick County is also in the same process of doing the same thing with their current record management system over to the same system. They're giving every, all the other agencies in the county the opportunity to come over at no cost. The county's going to cover that cost to come over and join their record system so that way everybody can be on the same page and hopefully make everything a little more seamless when it comes to agencies being able to talk to each other and sharing records and things like that. So this is just a very preliminary stage, just getting this agreement into place so we can start working on some configuration things and some of those things. So I can answer any questions you may have.
Question for Chief on this new agreement? Ms. Kessler?
No, it's free to us. Do we need like hardware or, you know, other things that cost money?
I know, there won't be anything. It'll be cloud-based, so it will not have any physical servers here on property. It'll be maintained by the county. I mean, that agreement talks about how they maintain that. The term that they're signing up for is 10 years, so hopefully during that time, there won't be anything like that. At this point in time, it doesn't appear that there will be anything major since they're going to cover the cost of that. So at this point, the answer is no, there won't be any physical wiring or anything else we'll have to take care of.
Thanks.
Ms. Crum?
Do we have any way to make sure our system is, our information is backed up during the change so that we still make sure we have?
Our current record system is backed up through our department, so we'll maintain control of that. There won't be any issues with any other.
So now that's going to be converted? Everything that's going to switch is just going to be starting from point A, or are we going to convert some of that?
That hasn't been determined yet. It's probably going to be based on cost as far as how much of that will take over. Our current record system goes back to 1999, so there's a lot of information in there that could be quite costly to try to convert all that over. And there's a break in there where the information changed, where they converted it from an old system to a newer system, and there's a break in there where some of the information is not quite what it was, so it's going to completely depend on what the two companies will charge us because we'll have to pay our current company to convert the data and the new one to import it. So probably depending on that cost, it'll depend on how much. But the things that we do have, we'll maintain, we'll maintain that backup so we have access to that information.
Okay.
Although we won't actively be putting anything new into it.
Okay.
Would you like to do this agreement, council? Ms. Barton?
Make a motion, we accept the agreement with Sedgwick County for the new system. Second.
Post second to the agreement with the RMS system? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, move to item B, consideration electrical and lighting improvements at Warner Park. We have a memo from Tony showing what we were wanting to do. This was one that we started to back off on because of, for one, for the cost, and two, because of the increased cost of what's happening with materials and those type of things out there. Once we did that, then Philip Southern stepped up and said, we'll, we will donate 5,000 of our labor, and we'll donate $9,000 of our own material. So they wanted to get the work and get it done. This allows to have lights around the lake itself so that we can extend the length of time to be used. Right now, there's lights in the dog park. People can use that, but it's totally dark going to that dog park and everywhere else up there. The new shelter cannot be lighted because there's no electricity. This will give us light to the new shelter that's there also. And eventually, we'd like to have restrooms. So this will give us the water line for restrooms that are over there. That's one of the things that a lot of people are continuing to ask for, even though the restrooms in the area, they like to have as close as possible when they're playing on the playground and doing anything else around there. So this will get us to that point. One of the things that helped offset the wire cost was one of our expensive costs. It doubled, but with the donation and the materials from Philip Southern and with the Public Works having the light poles, it pretty well offset that. So Tony's there, can I answer any other questions and go over anything? Tony? Ms. Barton?
So we're only going to put five light poles around the whole pond?
Right, so we're not, we're looking at just lighting it for security reasons, for like driving and parking lots. So most of those overhead lights will be kind of stage at kind of intersections or parking lots down there. Now, the future, if we want to light like the playground and things like that, we're able to do that very easy now with this project.
Ms. Kessler?
So the total price, $109,381.89. That includes the material that the city's providing. Also subtracting the donation and the material costs that's being provided by Phillips.
Correct.
Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Crum?
Just to kind of follow up on her question about, so you're only going to put it in five spots, but the wire's going to be run all the way around that pond?
Correct.
So that if we just, if we can put other lights in, the wiring will already be there?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay.
On both sides of the lake.
You see what the coverage is, and if it's not enough, it can expand by tapping into wire and putting in more.
Yeah, don't get any of those purple lights.
I heard they're popular now.
If you, we're talking about the same lights over the dog park. So if you happen to have been over the dog park at night, those really cover pretty well over there. So we'll see once or if the council wants to move forward. Other questions, council? Ms. Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the electrical lighting at Warner Park from Philip Southern Electric for $109,381.89.
Second.
Post second to approve the bid for Southern Phillips for the lighting at the Warner Park. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item C is a consideration of the lighting improvements on North Main. As you see, the road is working pretty well. They're getting along pretty good and getting it done. I think they're ahead of the schedule. But the one thing that we, if you stop at Carla and go to the bridge, there's no antique lights there. So anyone walking that way at night, the lights stop at that point. So this will let us put the antique lights up to the bridge, plus give us five extra poles if someone continues to knock them over, as does happen out there. So you've got the City Electric Supply for the 27,059.24, and Tony can continue to ask any questions. Ms. Crum?
It's not really a question for Tony, it's just something that I've brought up a couple of times. It's something I would just kind of want to keep fresh in everybody's mind. I really think we need to get some lighting over on the path to the skate park as well.
And we've looked at that, it's where to run, we've got to run some conduit. This will give us some extra poles to do it with, too.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Barton?
I make a motion, we accept the bid from City Electric for $27,059.24 for 10 poles, antique pole assemblies. Second.
Motion second to approve the bid for the antique poles for the lighting in North Main. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move then on MD's consideration of the citywide sidewalk repairs. I think told you that Tony had someone that was going through those, and he's going to go through the presentation so you can see what the person put together.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a quick presentation on our sidewalk network. We've completed an evaluation of the entire sidewalk network through town. We evaluated on a condition and compliance of the network. The network was evaluated on three levels of deficiencies. Minor deficiencies are superficial and do not currently affect the safety or the integrity of the sidewalk. Moderate deficiencies are superficial and do not affect the safety or integrity, but will in the very near future. Major deficiencies have an immediate safety hazard. What you're looking at now, we'll go to total improvement needs if we can. So you can see these red, green, and blue dots. Green would be minor deficiencies, blue would be moderate, and red would be major. We have a total of 11,480 square feet of sidewalk that have some sort of deficiency. If we move on to minor, this will show only the green dots would be the minor. We have a total of just under, just over 4,000 square feet of minor deficiencies. And a moderate, we have just over 4,300. And that picture is just kind of example of a moderate. It's kind of hard to see, but that, those two sidewalk panels have about three or four kind of superficial cracks in them. As, you know, the rain and water underneath the sidewalk will continue to deteriorate. And last, we have major sidewalks. We have a total of 3,037 square feet of sidewalks that we feel create an immediate safety hazard to any pedestrians or bicyclists. And on to that, we've gotten quotes to remove or replace sections of sidewalks and ADA ramps that were found to have the major deficiencies. I'm seeking authorization to contract with Brad Murray Incorporated for a total of $26,300, and this will be paid out of the capital improvements fund. I can stand for any questions you may have.
Ms. Crum?
Tony, I always get nervous when I see a bid that's so much lower than, I know we only got two bids, but this one's like three times lower. Do we know about Brad Murray Incorporated? Do they do good work? Has it got any kind of guarantee with it?
Yeah, they have a one-year warranty. They were the contractor that did the Veterans Memorial, Angel Hope. They did some additional sidewalk repairs last year. We've done quite a bit of work with them.
Okay.
Ms. Barton?
There wasn't anything as far as the bid was only good for a certain amount of time because of the cost of concrete going up or anything like that?
No, we've been, we actually, we almost had this ready to come to council last week, but we had only one bid with Brad Murray. So we tried to contact the other bidders, and we were able to get Corneo to bid. But Brad Murray knows it's coming to council tonight, and they have not raised any concerns withholding that price.
Okay.
Ms. Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the bid from Brad Murray Incorporated for $26,300 for the citywide sidewalk repairs. Second?
Post second to approve the bid for citywide sidewalk repairs? Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewart?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
This is Tony's night, so he's now got consideration of the nuisance mowing service provider.
So we've received proposals to address code violations of high weeds and grass abatements. In comparison, last year's mowing bid was $178 per lot. We are requesting authorization to accept the proposal from H&amp;H Lawn Services for nuisance mowing services. I stand for any questions you may have.
Ms. Crum?
Do we know why the four other companies declined?
No. This is another one of those items that we've been trying to get to council for probably, Mayor probably knows, at least a month.
Hasn't Joe Jacks been our provider in the last couple of years, anyway?
Yeah, they were the one that was the $178, the city lot last year for the mowing.
So when they declined, they didn't give a reason for it? H&amp;H done stuff in town?
They actually contracted with City of Derby on their mowing abatements.
Good words from Derby?
Yes.
Discussion?
I was going to bring up kind of the same thing. Like last year was only one bid also, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And we thought about, I mean, it took care of this time, but as far as like next time, going, you know, further out into Woodstall area and trying to get places.
And that's, I think, what we've learned. We've, you know, previously always tried to contract or get bids from local, local vendors or contractors. You know, Bex, H and H and top, top notch is local, but Bex and H and H are not far outside that of. So that's what we've had to do. We've learned that, and we will definitely go that route next year.
Good.
Especially when the price is more competitive as well.
Ms. Barton?
I make a motion, we accept the nuisance mowing services from H and H for a hundred dollars a city lot.
Second.
Motion second to approve the nuisance mowing service provider as presented. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Hewitt?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item A is a consideration of a driveway incentive program. When I was looking at our code enforcement, there are two things that stand out. One of them, when the mowing season starts, how many people don't mow the yard. So that becomes a huge number. And the other one stood out was the number of people parking in their yard and grass and all of the things that's out there. As you can see from Tony's memo, this year alone, we've had seventy-eight. And I looked at the one for this week, we're up to about eighty-five people that truly parking vehicles where they're not supposed to be being parked in yards and so on and so forth. And again, last year was two hundred and sixty-six. So I asked for a look at a program to see if we can reduce that numbers out there and maybe get incentive to the people that are parking there, if that's their question. So this was a plan to come up with to present to see what the council thinks about it. Mr. Kessler?
It's great we're looking at new things, but I have a problem with giving people money to put in, paying for half of a driveway or a lot for people that are not following the city ordinance, where other people are, and other people are putting in their own driveways to follow the ordinance. So I just personally have a problem with, with the city providing taxpayer money to residents that are not following the city ordinance.
I think it'll be open to anybody.
What's that?
I think opening it up to anyone, then.
Well, thirty thousand dollars is not going to go very far for, you know, driveways for, for people. I'm not sure what the going rate is.
About fifteen hundred is what the total cost.
Yeah.
That's all you're talking. Seven hundred and fifty dollars within thirty thousand, that much that does.
There's no way we're going to do them all in one year, that's for sure. Right. And other people have been putting in their own driveways and third, third approaches. I want to put one in myself, third approach to my, to my three-car garage, because I only have two approaches. But I, I don't see this, yeah, even opening up to everybody, I would not be in favor of that.
Okay. Mr. Crowe?
I'm kind of just the opposite. I think this is a great idea. I think a lot of people that are probably doing that and getting, they can't afford to do it. One thing I was going to ask about it was if we had a plan of, because I, this just may be an assumption. I think maybe a lot of these may be happening at rental properties, too. So I mean, would you have to get, the owner would of course have to approve, and then they would have to decide how to do that. But I think this would be a great idea to help people that just can't afford to do it. This would give them a helping hand up and would, in the long run, it would help the city look better. And I think it's a great idea.
Other discussion, council? Ms. Barton?
You brought up a good point. What if we get a landlord who decides he's going to do five different ones of his driveways? I don't feel like we should be submit or helping subsidize his driveways because he's gotten all this month's money over the years and hasn't done anything with it. Is a single-family homeowner, an actual homeowner who lives there, you know, some stipulations on it.
I see some sort of an application for it or something.
But that's why we wanted, we wanted discussion to see what, and that's true. We do have several own properties in towns, but maybe the actual resident owner.
Yeah. If you lived in that house, because that's a lot of times, and I'm just using an example, home, warranties for like your, your heating and air equipment has to be homeowner residence. It can't be a landlord.
Uh, Mr. Walters?
Question, if we do go through with this, I assume we're going to give them a certain amount of time to accept or reject the offer.
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, well, they can't do it forever.
Right, not leave it on the table or something. And this looks like it equates to about twenty properties per year or so.
Whatever that divides out. But yeah, it sounds like a thirty thousand by seven fifty.
Maybe forty, pay in half.
Forty properties.
Since we're only paying half of fifteen hundred, it'd be forty.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So it's half of what we have so far, but it barely dents what we had in, in twenty twenty. It's just an incentive we try to look at to, for one, help the code enforcement problem that we have with highways. It seems like everyone has multiple cars. And again, that's not the city's problem. So it's just, I'm a city to try and help that part of it. Mr. Benner?
Would this be limited to vehicle, automotive-type vehicles, or would this also apply to boats and RVs and things that need to be stored on all-weather surface?
They can store whatever they could on that pad, is what they're supposed to. Because the pad would be right next to their, their driveway itself.
Not on all-weather surfaces alongside their house. It wouldn't be doing that.
No, we're talking about right next to their driveway.
And I like the idea of limiting it to owner residences.
And if Chris wants, we have a picture, kind of an example of kind of what we're talking about visually.
Oh, that's what you're talking about, not a whole driveway.
Correct.
Okay. I thought you were talking about like what I have, you know, just all the way down to the street.
Yeah, I think it's much more expensive if you put a driveway approach.
Yes. Because I just rededged one.
Mr. Crowe?
As we talk about boats and stuff right now, the way this is written, right now, you just get, it says parking violation. So is it for parking vehicles on a non-all-weather surface, or is it anything that's up?
We're getting, we're actually getting boats and there's also that are RVs, boats. They're all being, you know, being parked in their, next to their house and that type of thing. So that's all, yeah. Other discussion? Sounds like that we probably want to redo the other here to say it's for residents only, or, or those type of things that are there and come back with more of a plan, it sounds like to me. Ms. Hewitt?
Yeah, I was thinking, will we be able to see the contract that you make up for these people?
The contracts? Uh, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll go further. So we have a contract legal and, and those type of things that are there, so.
To make sure it isn't a landlord, but even if it is.
Right. It would be an application first, right?
Well.
Yeah, it's got to be a total application. There's got to be S and L and hold on. There's got to be a lot of other things that we'd have. We wanted to present the, or I want to present the, the plans so we can get discussion from council where they may want to move with this at this point.
And one thing to add, we have internally kind of drafted a procedure for this program, and it does call out owner occupied properties only. And basically what happens, the, the property owner would have to have a parking violation within the last calendar year. At that point, they can submit an application to our office. They will give us a site plan of what they're calling out for their driveway. Then we will have our concrete contractor go to that property and give us a quote. Once we approve that, we'll schedule that, and then we'll do a pre-port inspection on their driveway, and then we'll do a final inspection on that. The payment will be made by the city of Hayesville, and the resident will have to pay us the fifty percent prior to the project.
And, and we'll, we'll want to put a max dollars on it, too, at this point.
Right.
Ms. Barton?
Well, we were talking about it as open to everyone, but now he's saying it's the only people who had parking violations within the last year.
Right. That's why we have discussion. So Mr. Kessler doesn't like it either way, but I haven't heard anyone say different at this point.
I would rather, I mean, we were talking about it being open, and I don't have a problem with it being open. Because I don't think that we should just, like Russ said, you know, pay for somebody who's been parking on the yard to get half their driveway paid for.
Right. A lot of times, a lot of times, these are one-time shots of our, of our people that do code because of, of the situation of not wanting to move their cars, whatever it comes down to.
But if we advertise it, then they will have that opportunity, too. I mean, when they get the violation, until we run out of money, we can also provide them with that, tell them, hey, we got this one on, too.
So, yeah, it wouldn't be, that's what we talked about from what discussion area we want to open up to everyone in the city itself if the vote comes down. That's what we wanted to do. Mr. Crowe?
I guess my only concern to open it up to everybody is you may have, some people are going to apply for it that do have the money to pay for it. So I'm wondering if in the application, do we put some sort of financial, I mean, kind of like free and reduced lunch at school?
Beans testing?
Well, you know, well, it's not.
That's a bad word.
Yeah. I mean, somebody that can come to you that honestly you can tell they would really like this, but there is no way they could possibly afford that whole thing compared to somebody else that wants to park their RV and their boat, and they got all these other things that they, that they obviously can afford. So they could afford to do it themselves if they really wanted to.
Not if they're paying for all that stuff yet. I don't think you should limit it. I mean, because I don't, I really don't think you're going to, you may get somebody who tests that, but I don't think for the most part, somebody who, who owns the, or has the money is going to do that.
Who would it, I guess we might have thought they might have done it already, but.
Right.
Mr. Kessler?
You may have the person that's planning on selling their house a year from now and see this program and jump on it and get an extra pad, you know, laid down for half the cost and have a more of incentive to, when they sell their house.
Yeah, but the size of pad that they're showing, you can only park maybe a boat on it.
Nine by fifteen pad, I think.
It doesn't look like a very big pad. Not, not compared to your second driveway or my second driveway.
This is not to, like in the one picture he had, this is not to replace
Broken driveways.
Broken driveways and all that. Yeah, because I would have an issue with that.
See, I, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one's got some problems on the approach.
Right.
But.
Because they.
No, we're not replacing broken driveways.
Okay, well, yeah, because you get in approaches and stuff, and you're back into city and you're in a totally different issue there.
Well, you can tell that they've been parking something on the side because there's no grass. But the, the smaller driveway is not going to park a very big object there. A second car, third car.
Ms. Thompson?
We thought about other material besides cement. All-weather material, gravel, just.
The problem we know with gravel is that grass grows, and grass, we have a lot of people now that grass does grow up to fade the rocks. It then becomes code enforcement. It's got to go by and say, you got to kill the vegetation. So it didn't solve the problem.
A lot of it ends up in the storm sewer after a while, and then it out on the streets.
It disappears. So it really didn't solve the code problem. The, the other thing, asphalt really doesn't work well with a concrete driveway, I don't think. Some people I know in town probably have done it, but it's really not the best. The concrete will probably hold up longer than anything else out there. Oil will eat away the asphalt eventually. After that would eat away the concrete. Other comments? If not, what we will do, we'll want to table this, and we'll bring back something a little more extensive from what we've heard from the council. This will also give you more time to think about it and even hear from anybody in town that you want to talk to as to what they think about it at this point. So, so we'll make a motion to table. Mr. Crowe?
I'll make a motion that we table the driveway incentive program until we get some more information.
Second.
Motion second to table? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Hewitt?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes. Thank you.
Let's see, is that all for Tony? I saw there's someone else. Okay, G is consideration agreement with Gear Connection. This is the ban for, that oh six?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July. So we want to ban this, the agreement we would have for fourth of July. Anybody want to make that? Mr. Crowe?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with Gear Connection for the fourth of July.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agreement with Gear Connection next fourth of July. Other discussion? Mr. Benner?
Is Gear Connection the name of the agency or something? This, this says Stole Hill Revival. Is that a different band?
So the, the band is Stole Hill Revival. The contract is with Gear Connection, who's the patient.
That's their corporation or whatever at this point. Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Hewitt?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item H is consideration agreement with Vinyl Ritchie. This is the one for oh six. Mr. Kessler?
This one in addition to the one we built around last time, or?
Two bands.
Okay.
Mr. Crowe?
I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Vinyl Ritchie for oh six oh.
Second.
Motion second to approve Vinyl Ritchie agreement for the oh six oh. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Hewitt?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item I is a consideration request to disallow fishing in Reeves Park prior to the fishing derby. So we'll need to, as we do, Ms. Barton?
I make a motion, we disallow fishing from July twenty-seventh until the, or June twenty-seventh until the fishing derby on July fourth.
Second.
Mr. Crowe, question?
Do we, is, is the fishing derby even working? Do we get a lot of fish caught? Because we always, we always do it a week. I'm always wondering what would happen if we didn't allow fishing for ten days. Would we get more, I mean?
Last year, we had a hundred and twenty-seven of fish caught in an hour.
Okay.
They were hungry.
Motion second to approve the disallowing of fishing in Reeves Park. Other discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Hewitt?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
J is consideration a temporary special event permit application for consumption on public property as a celebration of life at the senior center. Anyone approve it? Ms. Barton?
I vote, or make a motion, we approve the special event permit application for the celebration of life at the senior center.
Second.
Motion second to approve this special event permit for consumption of alcohol for the celebration of life. Discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Hewitt?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item seven, department reports. Will?
I have no announcements.
And G's not here. She didn't have anything. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to introduce our visiting officer this evening, Master Police Officer Aaron Watkins. He is currently our School Resource Officer at Campus High School. No, middle school.
Middle school.
Yeah.
And the dancing cop.
Just making sure you're paying attention. Yeah, I got confused because he was dancing this weekend. But he's at both middle schools, so say hi to him as you go by out there. That's all I got.
Tony, anything else?
The Public Works Department is starting a summer youth employment program. We are looking for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to fill the seasonal general maintenance worker that assists our department. We'll be hiring six people to work from June first to August thirteenth. If you know of anyone who may be interested, they can fill an application at ksgovjobs.com or at our office in person. Thank you.
One of the things we've always had problems with hiring temporary workers. Everyone wants a full-time job. So we've not been able to fill those for several years. This is a program I wanted to start years ago, but Derby beat us to it, I'm afraid. So Derby started it, so I guess we're going to be second in doing it. This will sure provide some jobs for our high school kids in the summer. They'll be doing, and it'll be paying them a good wage and doing it. Again, they're not going to be running large equipment or anything. There are certain things we can do, but this will give a job for the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds out there. So we look forward to providing some jobs for campus high kids. Mr. Crowe, question?
Have we contacted the high school, make sure they have a different program?
Tony's got it ready to go.
Yeah, we've emailed all the information to them. They'll be posting that to Google Classroom, something. Thank you.
Mr. Rorden?
I did have one question about, because I have a grandson that's sixteen. I'm on council. Is that going to be an issue, is it nepotism type?
What's the policy, guys?
From what I understand, I, Will can clarify, but I think any elected official cannot have any relations with any employee working for the city of Hayesville.
Okay, as all one know.
Recreation, Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The splash pad at the Hayesville pool is open now daily from nine AM to ten PM, weather allowing, and pool sales continue at that.
So we'd have some freezing children right now.
Yeah. They wouldn't care.
They're tough with the air. Item eight appointments? We have none. Item nine, off agenda citizens. Any citizens emailing or